Unusual to do this, but an item has come to the attention of the City of Oroville staff subsequent to the posting of the agenda for this February 7, 2017 regular meeting. Pursuant to Government Code 54954.2, staff is requesting that the council take action to add this item to the agenda. And the item to be added is Closed Session Agenda Item Number Six, which reads, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, the City Council will meet with Acting City Administrator, City Attorney, and Public Safety Director regarding public security. And that requires a motion.
I so move.
Second.
End of vote.
I'll, uh, Sherry, I'll give you a call.
You need to vote.
Janet, will you push?
You need to vote.
Yeah, your wrong hand.
Oh, I'm in the wrong.
So I need you to undo that one.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, okay. Is it this one?
Yes.
That's the one you want to push, and you'll need to unpush the other.
Okay, I am so sorry, thank you.
No, it's okay.
If you push yes again, it'll undo it, or it should. There we go.
Yeah. Okay, all votes are in, this motion has passed. We need to do roll call, we did that before, roll call.
Jamie, could you please take roll?
Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Del Rosario.
Yes.
Councilmember Draper.
Here.
Councilmember Hatley.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodson.
Here.
Mayor Donmeyer.
Council will now convene to close session. No action was taken, but direction was given.
And Madam Vice Mayor, if I might, to just add, on items three, four, and five, no, two, three, and, items two, three, and four, we will need to reconvene back to closed session after the meeting.
Councilwoman Linda Draper, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, living, dear, and just as one.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a proclamation, a presentation of the recognizing February 2017 as National Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month. Is there anyone here that will be accepting this presentation? The City of Oroville, a proclamation recognizing February 2017 as National Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas, one in three adolescents in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, sexual, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth, and whereas, in 2016, the number of youth seeking services at Catalyst Domestic Violence Services as either victims of dating violence or as children of victims of dating violence exceeded 130 individuals. And whereas, women and girls between the ages of 16 and 24 experienced the highest rates of intimate partner violence, almost three times the national average, and whereas, youth who experience violence in a dating relationship are at increased risk of substance abuse, depression, poor academic performance, teen pregnancy, suicide, eating disorders, and carrying patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas, it is essential to raise community awareness and to provide training for parents, teachers, counselors, and other school staff members so that they may recognize when youth are exhibiting signs of dating violence, including extreme jealousy, constant monitoring, and controlling behavior, and whereas, healthy relationships are built on respect, trust, and equality. Now therefore, I, Janet Goodson, Vice Mayor of the City of Oroville, in concurrence with the Oroville City Council, do hereby recognize February 2017 as National Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month, and urge all residents of Oroville to support the efforts in their schools, community groups, and families to empower young people in understanding safe and healthy relationships. We encourage community leaders to assist those experiencing abuse in finding and accessing information and support services that engage in activities that prevent and respond to dating violence, to prioritize healthy relationships in their own lives, and to engage in discussions with community members of all ages about dating violence prevention in their community. On behalf of the City Council, on behalf of all of us, I just appreciate and I applaud your unselfish service to the community and, and those that are, that are of, of this, this clientele. And I just want to really thank you. I do personally know the work that you, you do because I, I have clients that are very familiar with your services. So, again, thank you, and I would, would you like to have words?
I'll let Marsha talk, but I'm Cindy Hawthorne, I'm an advocate in the Oroville office up at the CCC building, and she's going to share a little bit, and I'm going to pass out buttons.
Well, as Cindy said, my name is Marsha, I'm the South County Law Enforcement Advocate for Catalyst Domestic Violence Services, so I respond a lot with law enforcement and help do trainings. But on behalf of Catalyst, I really want to say thank you to the City Council for declaring February as Teen Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month. As you heard, read off the proclamation, there, you know, there's a lot of high statistics, and you know, it's not just about the older population, it's also about our youth because they're the ones that are going to be taking over for us later on. And Catalyst really takes that into consideration and wants to make sure that there's education, outreach, prevention for our youth as well. We have a training for dating violence at the end of this month, if anybody's interested, you can go to our website, it's catalystdvservices.org. And also, this year is our 40th anniversary for serving Butte County, so we're really excited. Cindy has passed out some buttons to say thank you for your guys' continued support for Catalyst.
Thank you so much, can we applaud these ladies? Thank you. If there is anyone that would like to speak on any of the agenda items that has not already filled out a speaker card form, please do so now, thank you. Are there any City Council members that would like to pull an item or items from the consent calendar?
I think they asked that item three be pulled before, so.
Item three? All right, thank you.
I think Mr. Hatley.
Vice Mayor Goodson, we also have a request from the public to speak on item number two.
On item, all right, item number two as well, thank you, Jamie. And I would like to pull item seven.
Let's see.
Thank you. All right, so are there any questions, comments, or, we've already heard that there are three items, two rather, I'm sorry, to be removed. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar with items two and three removed.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Our first item is.
We have voting is open.
Oh, thank you so very much.
All votes are in, this motion has passed.
I see that we have a speaker on item two. And do we have any council members that wanted to speak on item two? Al Zib, am I saying that correctly? Good evening.
Pardon my appearance, I've been on the roof, got a leaky roof. I just kind of ran over here. This tree removal is at 1550 Robinson, I mean, have you, have you had a presentation on this, have you gone over it?
Yes, we have.
It is on the consent calendar, so yes, there's no discussion, it's open, the floor's open to you.
Oh, okay. Can you pull up number, page 17 on the agenda, by any chance? You can't do that?
No.
Okay. Well, I'll just give you my input, I do not want those trees removed, okay? There's no reason to remove them, because they're not causing any harm. I was hoping you could pull up the pictures that you have.
We have them there.
Oh, you have them there?
Yes, we do.
Which picture are you referring to?
Page 18 on the PDF on the agenda has, has three pictures of the property that was taken by Mr. Atterbury. And I want to point some things out on there, but.
Would you like to use mine?
Pardon me?
Would you like to use mine, so that you can see what page things are on, or?
Well, oh, okay. Okay. Difficult doing it this way, but, all right. The first picture, where, you see the two trees in front of 1550? And behind those trees is my house. I take care of those trees. And evidently, I do, I do not know why they want to take them down. I do know that on page 17, there is a fund from PG&E, they can get $1,100, what, per tree for removal? Is that how it works, Don? You don't know?
We do know if we can.
That's not how it works? Okay. Do you know why they want to take them down?
It says so in the staff report.
Pardon me?
It says so in the staff report, and this is not a question and answer between you and me, this is your comments to the council.
Whatever decision you make on this, you will see on first page, a puddle. That puddle is not caused by the tree. That is caused by a poorly installed driveway.
20 seconds, Mr. Zib.
Pardon me?
20 seconds.
Okay, I'll be real quick about this. Turn the page over to this right here. Okay? See the raised curb? That is not caused by the tree. That is an old curb. To the left of it, you'll see the lower curb. The curb was removed, and that curb was installed later and lowered. So the tree did not cause that. Those trees are not causing any problem over there. I would suggest, yeah, maybe moving this to next month. I prefer you do not vote on this until there's been some more input from the neighbors. Was there, uh?
Mr. Zib, your three minutes is completed.
Okay. I just object.
And could I, could I have those pages back from you? Thank you.
Thank you, are there any other comments on item two?
I can answer a couple of questions here. Again, the staff report is very clear, if you look on the second picture where we've added asphalt on the sidewalk, it's because the sidewalk and curb are being lifted by the tree, that's what it is. The person making this recommendation is the, are the city's arborist. Again, these are on the tree, the forest, the urban forest management plan, these type of trees should not be planted in these planters because there's not enough room for these trees. These trees will be removed and replaced with a tree that is appropriate for this planter. So these trees will come out, if the council gives us that direction, and will be replanted with another type of tree that is better suited for this planter.
Do you know if Susan Sims has looked at this, or not?
I, I'm not sure that if her and Wade have talked, I would assume that they have, but I don't know, I can't, I can't ma, I can't tell you that, yes or no.
So at this time, I am asking for an action from the council.
I'm wondering if we can't postpone this.
That's, I, that's what I would like to second, if you move that.
I, I think, I would like to move this to our next calendar.
And I would second that, if you want to second.
All right.
And just for, for a point of clarification, if you want to continue something, it doesn't technically require a motion and a second, we can, but if, as long as the council is okay with that, then we'll move it to the next agenda, just requires just consensus.
All right, and so what, is there a general consensus to carry this over?
What do we, I guess our arborist is saying one thing, what, what are we looking for? I mean, I, I'm, where are we going with this? Why are we postponing an action if we know the arborist is going to come in and tell us, I guess that's what we're waiting for, for him to come in, I guess, but, but, I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't have a problem doing it, I just, I'm just kind of curious why, I mean, if.
You're asking what the intent is.
Right, I mean.
And so I believe that Councilwoman Marlene Del Rosario might have the answer to that.
I'm in agreement with the gentleman that we maybe should let public comment on this, there are neighbors there, and Susan Sims helped to draw up the tree agreement that we have. I'm wondering how this fits into that, and I would just like to research it further myself.
Okay. I, I was just curious what, why we're doing it, I, you know, i- if the tree needs to come out because it's damaging the sidewalk and puts us in a liability issue, if somebody comes along and we don't do something, they say, "Well, you knew that this tree was causing a sidewalk problem," or whatever the issue may be, you know how it works here, and, and the next thing you know, we're in, we're talking to Mr. Huber because we're in litigation over it, I just want to make sure that.
I'm just asking that it be postponed for two weeks, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done, I'm just asking to postpone it so that I can do some further research.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So this isn't an item that needs a vote, but we can all agree?
Can I, can I make a comment? I pushed the button.
Yes.
I would just like to add that a couple of weeks delay isn't going to hurt anything, those trees will still be there, they can be cut down just as easily in two weeks, but it wouldn't hurt to go out and check a little more carefully and talk to the arborist and another arborist, and just kind of see, you know, if this has to happen. Because as we all know, you know, once trees are cut down, they're gone, they're gone for good, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Linda. Jamie, I'm not sure if, because I, I don't see who's on, in the queue.
Is your screen working right now? Can you see anything?
And so, I did not see you in the queue.
She pushed a second time, which removed her name.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item three.
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, thank you. I, I had come in, when I looked at this item and saw a $4,000 capital fund expenditure, and it dealt with the roundabout, and I came in and talked to Mr. Rust about this, and, and just so the public knows, so it's on public record, because a lot of times I don't get the staff report, he could explain how we got, it wasn't anybody that's here now that got us into this, so I would like that to be on record, that if, if Mr. Rust wouldn't mind explaining it for everybody.
Again, Madam Vice Mayor and council members, Don Rust, the reason this is here is back in May 5 of 2015, a staff member authorized $4,000 to go in addition to the current $217,000 contract that was already out. Again, that staff member didn't have the authorization, that would have to come to the council, that is the reason why it's here, because we don't hide things from the council, we actually want them in open session, shown to the council what is happening. We are obligated here because somebody committed us to do this over two years, almost two years ago now, so the idea here is that this is part of the design of the roundabout, it was for revisions in the landscaping, which we are even taking more revisions to landscaping out for maintenance purposes, long-term expenses, so, again, it really is to help finance, because finance had never seen this, and I'm asking them to pay the contractor, the consultant here, for some, some dollars. And again, this, this is an obligation that we've unfortunately are oblig, I believe we're obligated to, but again, this really takes council's authority or council action to approve the $4,000 extension, this contract, so that's the only reason why it's here, should have been here before May 5 of 2015 is when it should have been here, so, but unfortunately, that didn't occur, I need it to be approved now so that finance can continue processing this, which is almost done, it's almost over, I don't believe there will be any more associated with this consultant, on this roundabout anyway. I, I hope that answers Mr. Hadley's question, Councilman Hadley. So what I, what I need you to do is authorize, take the recommended action, which is approving or adopting resolution 8575.
Correct, and so, we're asking council members to, we're seeking a motion to adopt the resolution number 8575.
I'll make that motion.
And agreement number 2042-2.
Yes.
Thank you.
So move.
A second.
All votes are in, this motion has passed.
Thank you. We're mov, moving on to Business Assistance and Housing Development Department.
No, we'll be. Item four? No, we'll be moving on to number six.
Item, item six, I think it is, we go with the irregular business now.
All right, thank you. Item seven, regular business.
Item number six.
Item six, public hearings, there are none. Seven, regular business, we have.
It's Public Safety Department, number six.
Number six.
Number six, hiring freeze, clarification, and reclassification within the Public Safety Department.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and Council, what you have before you tonight is just clarification for my department and myself as to the hiring freeze is currently in place with the city due to our structural imbalance that the city is enduring right now. What you have in front of you is just the, what the, how the department is operating today, what's actually happening, the number of boots that are on the ground. The issue that we've ran into with the hiring freeze is we run into situations where we don't have an adequate number of personnel to staff the patrol side of the department on some days, so what we're looking to do is just get clarification as to the hiring or the not hiring of what I would consider an essential employee. What an essential employee is, is not trying to devalue anybody's work or anything else, because I understand everybody's work is important, but the essential functions of the Public Safety Department are to provide police personnel, fire personnel, and dispatchers. On holidays, that's what works, MLEs are off on those days, and all the administration is off on those days. So as you can see now, everything that's highlighted in red is currently vacant. Right now, I'm working with seven dispatchers, seven dispatchers is the same number of dispatchers that I had when I was only doing police service. We are now also dispatching fire, so we are down below where we were at. I'm utilizing overtime every day to cover dispatch, so I'm looking for permission to hire a dispatcher to fill back one of those positions and maintain the other one, that's not, it's going to remain vacant for right now, we've come up with an alternative schedule that will allow us to cover that hole with having a minimal amount of overtime, utilizing the MLEs to do that. Right now, what we're doing essentially is we are robbing the MLEs off of the street, and they are working in dispatch to cover our hole in there. You can see I have two empty MLE positions, I know this is very small, but I'll try to point it out to everybody, the second longest row going down to the bottom is the MLEs, the two at the bottom are vacant, those have occurred from people leaving the organization, seeking employment elsewhere. So those are currently vacant now too, I will not fill those back until such time as the structural imbalance has been resolved and we can fill those positions. On my investigations portion, I, right now, I'm covering the sergeant position in there with an officer in charge, that's why it has the OIC written underneath the sergeant in there, it's right next to the MLE row. That officer in charge is covering patrol, he's covering, doing some investigating as time is available, and he's also working the school resource officer position, so we have combined several positions into one to try to alleviate the burden on the general fund. I also am running with three of my vacancies in the Investigations Department, I'm currently operating with one detective. On the patrol side of this, you'll see I have three officers that are vacant, and also a pending sergeant vacancy. What I'm looking for from the council, if I can get the next slide, please, Jamie, on the fire department side of it, everything highlighted in red in there is a vacancy that currently exists, or somebody is filling in an interim position. Each piece of equipment that we operate every day on the fire side of our service requires somebody to be in command of that piece of equipment. If we don't have that command in place, we can't appropriately, or we can't appropriately, but we can't as safely as possible operate that piece of equipment in emergency situations such as fires, or whatever the concern may be that the fire department is out handling, so we need somebody that operates that. About a year ago, we put in place the lieutenant positions to help alleviate that, so we didn't have people acting out of class and doing things like that, which required us to pay additional monies. So we put the lieutenants in place, well, through the course of business, we've had a few retirements at the fire department, and we've had to move people into other positions. We've moved two of our captains into the battalion chief positions, and we've moved one of the battalion chiefs that was currently existing into the deputy chief position. The reason why I need a deputy chief on the fire department side is I am not a, I like to kid about it, but I am not a fire professional. I, quite honestly, I'm not sure how the truck cranks up, I'm, I'm, don't know if it takes a key or a button or what, what I am is an administrator, I can administer the department, I can handle the budgetary side of things, but I'm very reliant upon a professional in there to tell me and to educate me on a regular basis of how we do things and why we do them in the fire department, instead of me just making an assumption and relying upon my opinion, which is most times probably not correct, so I have to have somebody there to help advise me and guide me on these things. That's why that position is essential. The battalion chief positions are also essential, we have a interest in the El Medio Fire Department in keeping it sustainable. Right now, it provides service to the South Oroville area. They do not have a chief over there now, which means they do not have any sort They do not have a chief over there now, which means they do not have any sort of battalion coverage. We are providing that. We have a financial interest in trying to keep them as solvent as possible, as long as possible. And by providing that battalion chief coverage, that helps them. So, it's essential that we have that. We also have them to oversee both pieces of equipment and ensure that everything that's happening is happening, to order up additional resources and do all of those, uh, necessary things. Because when an engine arrives on a scene, the captain will immediately begin that process of ordering the additional resources, personnel, whatever may be necessary to handle the situation. But the count, the captain is also responsible for managing the scene. So, that has to be handed off to somebody else who can take a bigger picture, a step back one step and keep those resources coming directed into the right location. So, it's important we have that. Now, how this affects us and why this is a budgetary issue is each day that we're doing this, I have, uh, lieutenants that are acting as captains on those pieces of equipment. Now, when the captain, the acting or the lieutenant is there, acting in the capacity of the captain that particular day, if that person decides to take a day off, it requires me to spend overtime because I have to bring in either that other captain or the other lieutenant. Because somebody, a company officer, has to be in charge of that piece of equipment. So, how you, you know, we are incurring a lot of overtime doing this because people are entitled to their time off. They get sick, they want to take a vacation day, they, um, they've earned comp time, however it is that, or whatever it is they want to do with their personal time. They're human beings like the rest of us and they want to be away from work. You know, uh, we have an obligation to allow them to do that. I mean, if they have earned it, we should give it to them. So, in order to alleviate this overtime, what I'm looking for clarification on is a couple different things from the hiring freeze. One, is it acceptable to the council that if I hire only essential personnels that, that do not increase the structural imbalance of the city? What I'm saying is if I lose a firefighter, firefighter leaves and I need to fill that seat and it doesn't increase the structural imbalance, can I hire that position? Um, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with this and you understand what I'm doing in it. I'm not coming out, um, at you sideways on that. If I lose a police officer and I need to cover those shifts, can I hire a police officer as long as I do not increase the structural imbalance of the city? The other thing I'm looking for is the, making the proper movement, personnel movements within my department. The way to alleviate the overtime on the fire department right now or to at least reduce it, because you're never going to completely eliminate overtime in public safety. I, it's good theory, it just doesn't work. So, we can try it and we can keep working at it. It's nothing that you fix, it's something that you manage. The best way, in my opinion, to manage this is to make the structural changes, to put people in permanent positions so that there's stability. Right now, what's really lacking in my department and the one thing that I can give them is some stability. I mean, because right now, everything's kind of chaotic. Uh, the finances are not good and, you know, we just don't know where we're going and it's very troublesome. But if we can at least give the stability of what our structure is to our personnel, that will help some. I mean, I think that'll help on a daily basis, it will help on a morale basis. So, what I'm looking for is permission from the council to make sure that I'm not violating your directive of hiring freeze, don't make any movements, um, as far as promotion or things like that within my department. So, I'm looking for permission to do those types of things.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Chief Legron for that clarification of the hiring freeze for public safety employees. Uh, Councilwoman Marlene Del Rosario is in the queue.
Uh, you mentioned that you have people working out of class. Do we have a problem with that? With lieutenant taking over a captain's position for a period of time and then they are a captain?
No, that's not the problem. Lieutenant can do that. The problem is, is that on the second piece of equipment, we're asking an engineer to step up out of class and command that piece of equipment.
Right.
They are now acting out of class. And by technicality of our personnel rules, if we know somebody's going into that job and they're going to do it for more than thirty days, we immediately begin paying them out of class.
Yeah.
They have been very good to us and not requested that. But it is within the rules and they can't ask for it. So, the only way we can ensure that we're not going to, that we can control or at least manage what the five percent is going to be, is to put somebody into that position permanently. Because the part of the side agreement with the OFFA is that if a lu, uh, captain is not at work that day, the lieutenant will step up and command the first piece of equipment. And we can ask an engineer for that one day to work in this position and not pay them any out of class. That was part of the agreement.
Uh, this has no effect on the budget. It's just backfilling what you already have, but people have quit or left for some reason, right?
Correct. There will be some, uh, impact to the budget. I mean, what, what the impact will be is on the la, on the, um, payroll side of it, you'll see some increase. But I believe on the overtime, you'll see that not being burned at quite as high a rate.
I see.
Any other comments?
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Hadley?
Thank you. Now, I, I understand patrolmen and firefighters and that because, I mean, it, it's already budgeted and, and when one leaves, I understand replacing that because it's, it's already budgeted position, doesn't cost us any extra. So, it doesn't impact our, our budget continues on the same. However, when I'm looking at battalion chiefs and deputy chiefs, um, when you get to that management level, we expended a lot of money on buy, uh, paying off all their, um, parting fees, if, if, for lack of a better term, because, and we spent, expended a lot of money. Now, if we replace those right now, does that add on? Because I don't know if it took the rest of their year's salary to pay those things off, to buy, you know, to buy out their sick leave and, and comp time and all that stuff. Um, so, is that money already been expended just to do that, to get, so when they retired? And now, we're going to add on top of that, because, because that money was budgeted to, to get them, you know, through the year. And then, when they left, you see where I'm going with this? Now, are we adding just another layer on top of that? So, it is going to impact our, our general fund quite a bit if, if we turn around and hire on top of that, when, when we were going to use that savings from them not being there and that, that position staying vacant until that money was used. You, you see where I'm, what I'm asking here? Do you understand?
This structure would have been different with somebody else there. You would have seen more people down toward the bottom because we have absorbed them. We have not replaced the individuals that left. We are using in-house personnel for this. No new personnel will be hired for this model. The red will just disappear, is what will happen. So, we're not hiring new bodies, we're changing classification on the fire side of this discussion.
Okay, so when, when you put in a deputy chief or a battalion chief, you're not going to hire him below that, uh, on a fireman's side then?
No. One of the examples that I gave in the staff report was an acceptable hire. An acceptable hire is not, or an unacceptable, um, clas, reclassification would be one that would allow me to reclassify somebody to a higher position and then backfill their position. If I make the move of reclassification, I cannot backfill on the bottom side. I have to leave that vacant until such time as we recover.
You understand. I, I'm all for public safety. I mean, a, and that's not the reason for my questioning on this. But in a financial crisis that, that, that we seem to find ourselves in, I want to make sure that we're not doing something that, that, we're not thinking it through and I'm not asking the questions. And now, you've answered it and I understand it now. But I just wanted to make sure that we didn't promote somebody up and then hire underneath and say, "Yeah, but I promoted them and now I've got these, these other positions below him" that those guys filled up above. So, as long as we're not going to hire below that, you know, the, the bottom, um, firefighters and, and...
Let me share one thing with you too. This is, uh, you know, the dirty secret and if you guys say, "Go ahead and do it", um, this doesn't work out well for the battalion chiefs, the interns that are in there. They become what's called an exempt employee. I'm not going to pay them overtime no more, I'm just going to work them. Uh, so, that works out for us. I can push a battalion chief if necessary to cover a captain's position. They're absolutely qualified, capable, they are former captains, they know exactly what to do. So, we do gain the benefit of that. They become exempt employees that are not subject to overtime any longer. Right now, beans that they're working out of class, they are still subject to the OFFA MOU and they are, which is Orville Firefighters Association's MOU and Memorandum of Understanding, our contract essentially with them. So, they are entitled to overtime. We can eliminate that by making this move. So, we have some savings there by working them to the point that we need them to work. Uh, so, we don't pay overtime for that and then we're not moving people around all the time or having to bring in a specific person, which typically, when you get to this level, um, as a lieutenant or a captain, you're at the upper end of the pay scale and you're more expensive. So, we have a, uh, if we put everybody, place them appropriately, I believe our burn rate of our overtime is going to see a considerable drop.
Okay, because if, if they're, you mentioned before that if somebody wants to take a vacation or a sick day or whatever, then you have to cover it with overtime. How would that, how would doing this alleviate that?
Because each one of those represents a shift, A, B, or C shift.
Right.
Um, you know, individual names can go in there, but we don't use names, these are just positions. Right now, what I have on each shift is I have a lieutenant and an engineer and a firefighter. Uh, so, if the engineer or, let's say the lieutenant is the, uh, one we're focusing on decides they want to take the day off, I have to call either the captain from the B shift or the lieutenant from the A shift because they're company officers that can command that piece of equipment. And by agreement, I have to call one of them to have them come in and be the supervisor on that shift. If I have a captain and a lieutenant on that shift already, then I can just have the lieutenant step up and take command of that shift and there's no overtime involved.
Okay.
Thank you.
I move, I move, oh, there's, I'm sorry.
Thank, thank you, Chief. Uh, City Councilman Scott Thompson is in the queue.
I'm all for this. Uh, the question I have is there's a lot of unknown very, just factors regarding numbers. Is it possible to bring this back just so that instead of making it just kind of a, yeah, go for whatever number that turns out to be, to where there's actually some facts and data in regarding to what that means exactly on, in hiring and instead of just like a blank statement of we're not going to affect the budget deficit of, maybe this is the, the position that's going to hire from here, we're going to fill this position, this is the salary for that one. So, there's more known variables as opposed to just...
That, that's a very difficult question to answer. Because it's, you know, right now, we've burned $99,000 of a $200,000 budget in our overtime budget. So, I mean, we've burned a considerable amount of that. So, i- it's very difficult for me to predict what the overtime's going to be, whether it's from sickness or vacation, whatever. On the police side, I know that I'm going to experience here shortly two people being gone for up to twelve weeks for our FMLA leave, which means I have to fill those shifts. So, I, I have that burn rate coming in there on overtime on that side. I think I've used almost, um, a hundred percent of that overtime budget already.
Outside of the overtime, is there a way for, specific for salary bumps and for salary fills to, to see those numbers?
Sure. I mean, we can, we can look at that. What I'm looking for on this is I need to be able to make the moves within the department that are the most advantageous to the council. This is, it, it's very difficult to say exactly what that number is and how this is going to, you know, whether it's going to be $50 or it's going to be a hundred. It's very difficult to say that. What I'm looking at in this is I know that the rate of overtime that I'm burning, I'm going to burn down that budget before we turn around and we're going to have an issue there. I have to provide service. I gotta be able to have the ability to move within my department and to manage my department. And the, this is part of the management of it. Uh, what I'm not, um, wanting to do is to, every time I need to make a move, bring it back to the council and say, "Is it okay if I move this person from here to there?" What, what you're looking at, Councilman Thompson, on each one of these, when you move somebody and, and, and let's just hypothetically suppose they're moving from engineer to lieutenant. It's about a five percent pay difference is what it is for each position, is what they will get. That will save us the time and a half that we're paying them on the overtime side. I can put some numbers together for you, but those numbers are no better than speculation because I'm guessing, um, at what that will be. But I can certainly do that if that's what you would like.
Thank you, Chief Legron. We have, uh, Councilwoman Draper in the queue. And next, we will hear from, uh, Councilwoman Marlene.
That's right.
Are you, are you good?
Don't worry.
All right, thank you.
Well, from what I've heard, we're just filling slots that are essential personnel. We've had about ten people leave, is that correct? And...
We're, we're, yeah, ten, twelve, we're somewhere in there.
Yeah. And so, if we're going to keep any kind of staffing that will cover the city, um, we essentially need to replace those, those bodies that aren't there. And it sounds like the trade-off here would be when you're just changing classifications in the fire department, those folks, um, essentially, we're going to come out okay, I think, because we're not going to have such huge numbers going out in overtime pay. So, it sounds completely reasonable to me, what you're asking.
Are there, thank you, thank you, um...
I will get you some...
Councilwoman Draper?
Uh, Councilman Thompson, I will get you some numbers to give you kind of an idea of what... I mean, I'll do the best I can. I just, I don't want to represent it to you that this is absolutely it and then it come out to be something different.
I move that we give the, uh, chief authority to replace employees that, uh, have left. Um, not all employees, but the ones that he needs to, uh, keep his staff functioning and to stop overtime.
I'll second that.
I believe that...
Too much.
So, I, so what I hear the motion is, uh, to authorize Chief Legron, um, to hire essential personnel as vacancies arise. In addition to, uh, authorizing the Public Safety Department to make key personnel replacements as vacancies arise, assuring adherence to the city's current hiring freeze.
And if I could just add, what I will do is, as we move through this process, I will bring back to you what happened, the, uh, individuals that went in. I won't tell you who the individuals are, but I'll bring you the number back for what I was paying for them and what I am now paying for them so that you have an idea of what we were expending, what we are expending and what the, um, what the results of that are. That way, you at least kind of got an idea. I know it's, it's one of those, I actually thought about what you had asked me, Councilman Thompson. It's like, I don't know exactly how to quantify that and give you a, a very good, reliable number. But I will bring it back.
And then, it's working together with Ruth closely to, on all of the dischanges, obviously, so that each decision is worked together, understanding that you said the statement specifically not to affect the, um, deficit that we have.
To a degree, yes. But I am going to run the police and fire department. I mean, I am not going to, uh...
I understand, but in, overall, because you made that statement, uh, specifically, so there has to be some, uh, so that, that isn't overstepped.
Yes, sir.
Right.
That would be budgeted positions, that are budgeted and funded positions. Yeah, I just want to make sure that...
Well, I, I have no intention right now of hiring a new body.
No, I...
I mean, unless someone leaves.
I, I'm not questioning that at all, I'm not questioning that at all in any way, shape, or form. I just wanted in the, in the record that we're talking about already budgeted positions. That's all I, that's all I wanted, that clarity.
Thank you, Councilman Hadley. So, I believe we do have a motion and a...
And I seconded that.
Thank you.
Voting is open. All votes are in. This motion has passed.
Moving on to Community Development Department.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Item seven, project contract change order with Jason Abel Construction. And I believe we have, uh, a speaker in the audience on this item, August Lincoln.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, City Council. The roundabout was started in August twenty, August the 25th, 2016. It's February now, six months. All we have is delays, some justified, some unknown. All we know for sure is the contractor is keep asking for more money. Mr. Rust once stated at a meeting, "All we need is four days of no rains so we can pave." Well, several times that has happened, still no paving. If you go to Walmart, you can see how many they paved over there, how much has been paved at Walmart during this rainy season. So, what's the problem? I believe the city is a cash cow for some of these contractors. Just keep asking for money, the city writes a check, gives them the money. If you live on Grand Avenue and you make a left turn, if you live off of Grand Avenue and you make a left turn onto Grand Avenue between Third and Table Mountain Boulevard, as, as I said in the past, you have to be a kamikaze pilot. The traffic on Grand Avenue in the morning and in the afternoon is unbelievable. Sometime, the traffic from the Four Corners area goes all the way back down to the bridge in the morning. So, this being almost six months, probably gonna be seven months before this thing is ever done, I believe the city has a responsibility to help the citizens of Oroville. I believe the Oroville city residents have the busiest, biggest financial burden compared to the other cities in Buick County. The poorer the area, the more taxes and fees we pay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln. Are there any other comments? Uh, Councilwoman Marlene Del Rosario.
It's my understanding this money is not coming out of our budget, right? It's, uh, part of the grant?
It's part of the contingency, uh, that is part of the approved budget for this project. With the exception of twenty-five hundred and twenty dollars, which is spelled out in the staff report, which is coming out of capital project fund. Again, uh, the reason why I'm asking for this is there's about forty thousand dollars that should be coming back to the city, but until that has been determined, I have to use the contingency fund. And that is part of the landscaping that is being redone. Uh, again, the reason for this is due to when we are paving, we are paving in the wintertime. So, we've actually, uh, incurred a little bit of cost to make sure that the road is constructed appropriately. This should've been paved, I, I, I can't disagree with Mr. Lincoln that it should've been done a little sooner. However, it was the wettest October, the second wettest October in Oroville since nineteen sixty-two. Uh, uh, it was the wettest, their third wettest or fourth wettest January. It has rained. I did say if I had four days of dry weather to pave, we would pave. We have actually paved all of Table Mountain. Uh, Table Mountain may be opened in the morning if the contractor puts out the right signage package. We could open, um, uh, Cherokee, but that would require us to open the circle. I, I don't want to open the circle until Nelson is paved. Nelson will be paved next week. As long as we can fix the subgrade, the problem with the subgrade is, is raining. And when the subgrade gets wet, it has to dry out, or we're going to break pavement if we pave over wet, uh, subgrade. Uh, some of the subgrade in Nelson may have to come, come out, be dried. Part of this is making sure to put ta, uh, geotext, textile, uh, blanket underneath to make sure that we get an appropriate subgrade. Again, uh, hopefully tomorrow, the Table Mountain north and southbound will be open. I have actually promised a couple of people to do that, and, uh, spoke with the contractor this morning at our weekly meeting. Uh, he has indicated that he needs to get several signs. Uh, they should be up, uh, and I need to make sure that the engineer, uh, approves that signed package, so that we can actually open the table, uh, Table Mountain up. Uh, there's still gonna be a couple of issues with, uh, light poles not being in place, but, uh, we are going to open at least Table Mountain, uh, hopefully tomorrow, uh, if not, would've liked to have it open last week, but it wasn't, so, that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? I'm in the queue.
I have a concern, and it's probably because, uh, uh, I lack significant knowledge on this. And so what I'm seeking is clarification in regards to, there is a re, a revision of the aggregate base layer thickness for the structural, uh, section. And so my concern is, anytime that I see that there's a reduction or a decrease in, um, pavement, um, then that causes a concern for me, because what I understand pavement is comprised of three layers. There's your surface layer, your base, and your subbase. So, when you are, are asking for a reduction of the aggregate base, which is the middle component, which is, um, what you're asking is, is for a reduction of the structural support and the drainage part of, of the, the three layers. So, my question is, with this reduction in the base, uh, thickness, uh, is it going to, what is, there's gotta be a compromise here, and what it, what's going to be the repercussion of the effectiveness of the, the, the quality of the base? Um, and the longevity of that portion of pavement? There's, there's got to be a repercussion there.
Okay, so let me start with this. There are two courses, not three. There are only two.
There's only two.
There's the asphalt, and then the subbase, the subgrade.
So, you're talking about the HMA?
I'm talking, the HMA is the asphalt, the, the hot asphalt mix.
Hot mix.
Okay, and then there's the subgrade, which is the coarse material that is set over bedrock, or whatever the, you know, the pre-material that's already there. There was twelve inches of asphalt in there at one point in time, uh, that had been put in. So, we'd come through, uh, literally taken out all the asphalt, which wasn't part of the project, but that's how it was originally set up before I took over. Uh, put all that back in, and then put the, the base material back in. Uh, and I wanna say it's about, uh, ten inches, it could be eight, I, I don't have the set of plans in front of me. And then, so basically what this is asking for is to add more asphalt and less base. The base, the base was already in, and we scraped off two inches, or fifteen hundreds. That's zero point one five inches, whi, which is, it's, that's tenths versus inches, so we took off basically two inches, or point one five tenths of an inch, and then added that same amount of asphalt back in. So, we didn't cha, we, we added more asphalt, or, or more asphalctic concrete for, to make it thicker and stronger during the winter paving. If we weren't paving in winter, we'd have probably kept the same, for, about four inches, but we went a little bit thicker to add more strength to the act, the actual asphalt.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, thank you for your patience on that item. Uh, are there any other comments?
I'm in the queue, I think.
Councilwoman Linda Draper.
I just have a question. It says, um, part of this extra work, it says, is to repair damage to the roadway surface and other features of Table Mountain Boulevard caused by public traffic during the early opening to traffic, and before the final layer of HMA is placed on the roadway. Whose decision was it to open it too soon?
And actually, there is a minor adjustment that we made in the field as we placed pavement, is that we actually went to the top layer. We're not gonna come back and put the final top, it's already in place. So, it's actually ready to go. They would, if they had it all paved to Nelson, we would be striping and, uh, opening it up completely, but because of, uh, the, the need to make sure that it was structurally sound, we didn't hold back. So they, what they were gonna do was take off the fifteen hundreds at the bottom, and then put that in on top at the end. And actually, they put it all in at one time, it went in.
Okay. I was just curious.
Sure.
Thank you. Is, are there any other comments? All right, and, so we're asking, um, the council to consider a project contract change order in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars with Jason Abel Construction regarding the Table, uh, Mountain Boulevard Nelson Avenue Roundabout Project. Uh, do I have a motion?
And one last comment. It says, this project is one hundred percent grant reimbursable. I just wanna have that on the record. So moved.
Second.
Second.
All votes are in. This motion has passed.
Thank you Council. Uh, one, just follow up, uh, one of the things that Ruth has been working on specifically is getting our money back, or doing reimbursement, so Ruth is actually, uh, already processing it. I believe if, uh, we weren't in the position we are, uh, with a, a previous employee, uh, that isn't be, that would still be here, we would not be in the position that we are. So, we're working directly with finance to make sure that we're recouping our money as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Item eight, request for proposal to contract with a consultant to provide professional city engineering and inspection services.
Okay, for me?
Are there any comments?
I'm, I move that we, uh, accept the proposal to contract with, uh, consultants. Uh, this, I understand, will, will save us money as well as take liability away from us.
Sure, why don't you let me give a presentation here, because I think, uh, Councilperson Thompson would like to make a comment, but a, again, what this stems from is that we, uh, sent out, um, uh, applications for city engineer and public works director. Uh, we actually interviewed one person, because the second person that was to be interviewed did not show up. So, uh, we had, uh, at the end of that whole process, we had a conversation together, the council and, uh, staff. And basically, there were a couple of questions that were asked about whether we come back with a consulting firm, or whether we hire a consulting firm, and then maybe an engineering technician, or actually raise the salary and go back through a recruitment, potentially. Uh, so, um, as part of that whole process in that day, I talked specifically about, um, the city of Gridley and the city of Biggs have contracted with a firm. Uh, and they've gone through an RFP process where we could actually piggyback on that process, and basically use their process and choose one of the engineers. Uh, I had passed out a package to you this morning, or this, this evening, uh, regarding, uh, uh, the firm that both Gridley and Biggs hired. Uh, and then I met with them last week, just to see if they're interested. They have, they're actually very interested in this. Uh, the cost that we current play, currently pay for our, uh, current city engineer, which is Cara Dele, who's overseeing the roundabout, is about two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Uh, the price that we've gotten back from this consultant, uh, which is the consultant I would suggest that we go through, but we'll go through the process uh, of interviewing a couple, just to make sure we choose the right one, are looking to pay, uh, an hourly rate of about a hundred and fi, a hundred and twenty dollars an hour for a city engineer on an as-needed basis. And the reason I think this is important, because we are actually doing another RFP for another department. Currently, we are looking for RFPs for both police and fire. So, we need to be willing to do that at City Hall also. The engineering department right now has zero employees. There's, there used to be four, there are none. All of those employees would be under contract through this, um, consultant, or a consultant very much like this. And then in the staff report, I recommend that we do this for at least five years. Uh, I believe that this will save money. I believe it will save us roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year through the current salary budget that's allowed for, uh, us, the, the interim city engineer and the associate civil engineer. All that work will be done on an as-needed basis. There are a couple of other modifications that we'll need to do, probably move some of the airport management duties to another employee, which we're already taking steps to do that, uh, with no additional pay, uh, just to make sure that we're still operating the airport appropriately. But I really think this is the process that will help you move through some fin, and financial difficulties that we are currently facing, and, uh, structural deficits that we're, we've been under for the last few years.
Councilman Scott Thompson is in the queue.
Good evening, Mr. Russ. Mike, did you get, um, a, I think there's one more application that came in later from, uh, Kevin, is that right?
Yes, there's an application that came in after the application period. So, uh, we, we, we've looked at it, we've seen it. I am still thinking that this is the best method that we need to go through.
My concern for going through an outside consultant is, um, those are for specifically as-needed basis, so they're reactive engineers, as opposed to somebody who's going to be looking for, uh, proactively helping to, you know, our, our roads are deteriorating very quickly, and we don't. Anyway, uh, having somebody on staff, I was doing some calculations with that, uh, if you consider it uh, compared to a employee, an employee that's, um, on staff, that would cover us at a forty-hour, um, an outside consultant, you're looking at twenty-two weeks out of fifty, fifty-one of the years. You're looking at, you know, a lot less versus, um, I'm open to looking at the, this firm, but I also wanna keep our options open for uh, looking into having somebody, 'cause for example, from my understanding, Mr. Kevin is both experienced in, both departments that we need, with public works and civil engineering, and is very familiar with our town. So, I don't wanna close that door.
Sure. Uh, a, again, y, you never close the door, a, as you go through an RFP process and you hire a consultant. If you go through that process for six months or twelve months, it becomes costly, uh, only in the aspect that you've paid one person, and then you have to use, you know, use that same salary, that same budget, to pay the other person going forward. So, right now, as an example, uh, probably somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year is what the budget is. I've got about four months left, uh, for the current, uh, ye, fiscal year, until we get into the next year, so, uh, whatever that is divided by, uh, a quarter, or a third, and that's where we're at with the, the budget for the cost. This is really the council's choice. Uh, the reason, I, again, I'm recommending the consulting firm, because I, again, if you look at this, uh, their package, uh, one of the persons that is a reference is Mark Sorensen, the city administrator for Biggs, who also used to be the, uh, mayor of Chico. Just saying that he is a very, uh, he has done his homework, he has sent this to me, helped me. I think for us, I think this is probably the best course of action to help us through the fis, the fiscal difficulties that we are currently in. But, again, as you asked, we should never close the door. I don't think we're closing the door. I think what we're doing is, uh, we might shut the door, it's still cracked a little, and at some point in, I, I would tell you that I would prefer to have a city engineer on staff. I just don't think we can afford it right now. I, I, I would, I would prefer that. I personally would prefer it, it would help me personally. But I really think that, again, as I said earlier, as we go through an RFP for other services in the city, we have to look at this, and I think this is the appropriate course of action. But really, it's, it's, you know, that's our recommenda, or my recommendation, or the other option is to provide direction to me.
Do, would we have a projected, uh, uh, cost per year? Could you come back with, at least with a projected cost per year if we went through?
We, we, I will be coming back to you, because you must sign the con, the council has to approve the contract, so.
And with the, on here, it says, um, potentially putting the RFP back that with, with an increase of, a bump in salary and whatnot. I don't necessarily think that's needed on the second round. It was only, my, uh, personal opinion, four weeks was very small amount of time. I mean, if you're selling a car and you have a good price on it, just because it's a good price doesn't mean the right buyer's gonna find it within the four weeks.
Uh, uh, all I, I'll, all I would add to that is this, is at the time that we were out for, um, opening the application, there are a lot of communities that had, uh, city engineers that were paying a lot more money. Uh, talked to several people about it. They did not want to come for the work, the, the actual work that, that, that this person needs to do for that amount of money. They, they, if, if we raised it, we would get a little bit more, we would get several more people. But I, I, I think for us, when we're asking other, other city employees to take cuts, how can we raise mon, how can we raise somebody's position, you know, and, um, I, I just think for us, right now, this is the appropriate action that we should do.
And I understand, but we also understand that there is the possibility of finding an employee at the same price. We can't say that's impossible, finding somebody who would do the job, and a great job, be engineer and a public works director, and accept the salary.
Right, and then the, the only, the only other difference that I think you may not be looking at is the salary and benefits, uh, the benefit package of the time.
That's what I was going to bring up a few minutes ago.
Councilwoman Draper?
This, we've discussed this pretty extensively before this, and, um, as you just said, the benefit package is the killer here. And, uh, we just have to really be conscientious about the money that's going out to CalPERS. And if we hire a consultant, we don't have to worry about paying for benefits, and for CalPERS, which is a huge deal. And if we hire an employee, then we have that. And of course, we could do the consultant for a couple of years, and then we could always hire someone down the road after we're through this five-year, uh, time period with CalPERS, where there's financial problems, so, just my thoughts.
Uh, and, and again, my only, uh, just to follow up a little bit, and I completely agree with that, and I, I don't want to have Councilman Thompson think that I don't, uh, agree with him. I actually do agree with you. I would really rather have a, a professional civil engineer on staff with us. I just think, uh, I think as we move forward, and, uh, things get a little better here, uh, that we will be able to revisit this in, in a few years, and bring a ci, a civil engineer back on to, um, the staff.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I might, um, one of the things I'll mention on a professional services contract and an engineer's contract would be one of them, they all contain clauses that they're, that they're cancelable at any point in time. So in the event that, that circumstances change, six months from now, if, if suddenly sales tax revenue just goes through the roof and the city has a lot of money and, and the determination is made, gosh, we'd love to have an engineer on staff tomorrow, you can certainly do that at any point in time by just giving notice to, to cancel a professional services contract.
So I have a comment. There is a considerable, um, reduction in that hourly rate, um, with Bennett Engineering Services. And so I'm, my question is, is that reduction contingent upon a five-year contract? Or can we still get that, that same reduction at a two-year?
Uh, I believe that their hourly, their hourly rate is, uh, they've offered, it's a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. And that'll be written into the contract. Um, so, and we can, again, as Scott has indicated, we can write it for a year.
All right.
Or an ex, and, uh, ex, uh.
You, you want to lock in the hourly rate for as long as possible.
For as long as possible.
Make it a hundred-year contract.
Mm-hmm.
You can always cancel the contract.
All right. Thank you. Yes, that's what I needed to know. Appreciate that.
So once again, I move that, that we go to an outside consultant for our engineering services.
And I'll second that.
Linda?
So sorry.
All votes are in. This motion has passed.
Thank you. Moving on to administration and department, appointments to the housing loan advisory committee. The council may consider the appointment of an individual that resides in the city limits and/or owns a business and/or works within the city limits. Additionally, the council may also consider the appointment of two alternate, uh, members to serve on the city's housing loan advisory committee. Are there any comments?
I, I served on that committee for two years. And, uh, while I was serving, so was Al Simpson, who I see is applying to be on that committee. And I would certainly recommend him for that.
Me too.
That sounds good to me, too.
There, there are three applications and...
Uh, before the council moves forward on this, just a heads up, um, there is a third council member that will be appointed at the next council meeting by the mayor. Not sure who that person is, but, uh, the mayor will make that appointment. However, we do need a committee member and then the two alternates. So there are three people here. So it looks like we're going to appoint all three of them.
Yes.
Uh, just a matter of which one is on the committee and which, and which two are the alternates.
And one or two of the applicants may be in the audience if you have any questions.
Well, I move that we nominate Al Simpson to be the, um, what is the term? The main?
The, on the committee.
On the committee. And then the other two.
Altern, alternates.
And they are Cornelia Marks.
Car, Cornelia.
Cornelia Marks and, uh, William Parish.
I second that.
Yes.
All votes are in. This motion has passed.
Under Finance Department, we have a payment arrangement request from Orange Tree, uh, Senior Apartments. And the council may consider a payment arrangement, uh, with the Orange Tree Senior App, uh, Apartments for annual sewer services. Are there any comments?
Yes.
Councilman Hatley?
Thank you. I, when I'm reading this report, um, and I'm looking, I, I just don't want to get us into any kind of a setting of precedent where somebody can come in and say, "Well, I don't want to," um, or "I don't have the money to pay my sewer bill." Well, we're paying quarterly through the city. Uh, we owe that to SCORE, which is an en, three entities, a city and, and, uh, Thermoledo and, and Loput. So, um, those fees have to be paid regardless. I mean, we can't waive those. We don't have the authority to waive those. So, uh, we've been paying those apparently. If, if we're only, if, if this apartment complex is only paying once a year, um, then we're taking money out of our fund to send those quarterly payments. So that means the other ratepayers in the community are paying that and upfront. And then the ci, you know, then we get reimbursed back into it. And that, and to me, that doesn't seem quite, quite fair. I, everybody should pay their own way as they go. And, and maybe this yearly payment thing is not a way to go for, for us. We may look at it, I, and I talked to Ruth about this, maybe a monthly or a, or a quarterly or something. Because if you get behind a year and then all of a sudden, for whatever financial reason or whatever reason, you come in, you say, "Well, I, I can't pay it and I want, and I'll, I'll make payments to you, but I don't see anything in there for interest." If you go to a bank, what would a bank charge you interest on this money? Because we can't even loan that money to ourselves without paying it back with interest. That's the law. We just can't do it. So if, if we're going to loan money, then we ought to do it, i- if we're going to turn the, the, the city of Orville Bank into operation here and start doing this for folks. Because if one does it, somebody else is going to do it. They're going to say, "Well, you know, I'll, I'll pay you monthly payments on it till, till they pay up. If you're not paying any interest, I will use your money all day long. If, if you'll loan, if you'll give me your money to use, I'll use it all day long. I don't have to pay you interest." And I, I don't, that's not what this fund was set up to do. This fund is set up to take care of our needs on that sewer fund and, 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 and to keep that thing working properly. So, I, what other businesses would come in or, or somebody else that says, "Hey," you know, and, and I just don't think it's proper. Uh, personally, I just don't. I, 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 I just can't go for that. Um, now, you know, I understand they came in and made, uh, partial payment on it or something, uh, Ruth was telling me. So, um, but the idea is, I know what my bill is every month. Uh, you know, I mean, I, I know what I owe. So, I, I'm still trying to figure out how, how we got a year out on this thing. I, I, it just doesn't make sense to me.
So Ruth, if you, if you'd like me to take this or if you'd like to make comments and I'll follow.
Either way, uh, we do billing annually on several properties. And so this is an annual billing. We're definitely open to monthly billing if that would help our customers pay easier. Cause I know it's a cash flow. It's a rather large amount. We're happy to do that. We're happy to charge interest, whatever is the pleasure of the council.
So if I, let me, let me follow up a little bit. What happened here was we got a letter from Orange Tree that asked us this question, if, if we will do this. Well, staff doesn't make this decision. So we would be making decisions for twenty-two thousand dollars before we make those kind of decisions. We'll make, bring it to council. Uh, again, they want to make a partial payment of thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars and then pay the difference over the next six month or, and to, at, by the end of the fiscal year, uh, June thirtieth. Uh, I would suggest, and other agencies that I worked for, the most recent one was Yolo County, if we handle any money like this, that we charge a ten percent handling fee. So the ten percent would be added as part of, you know, whatever the, the amount that, that we're handling, uh, ten percent, and then divide that out and get it monthly. And then we can then make mon, if they want to, to do this again next year, we either do it m, monthly by the arrangements, or again, we're sort of handling it still. I would suggest that, uh, we have a handling fee for them if they want to do this.
I, and, and I understand the handling fee and, and I get that, the ten percent or whatever, whatever number that may be. But I still think that, to me, that doesn't cover, in my eyes anyway, and I'm sure that there'll be other citizens out here that'll think the same. They still need to pay whatever, you'd go to the Bank of America or whoever and whatever they say, you walk in and this is my business, and they say, "Well, it's one percent, five percent, eighty percent." I don't know. Whatever that number is to loan you this money, that's exactly what we should do on top of our, our ten percent handling fee. Because now, we're having to go through and we're using the, the ratepayers' money to, to pay out that we have no control. We have to pay it.
Right.
So, a, and then, again, what's our, i, if we do this, how do we guarantee if they walked in and said, "Well, you know what? I'm just not going to pay you. I'm, I'm just not." Well, they're nonprofits, so they pay no property tax. Cause I called out to the county and checked on that today, just to make sure I was on solid ground. They said, "Nope, they don't pay any property tax." And number two is, what are you going to do then? Uh, I'm sure that, that Mr. Huber could come up with some way. I don't know if we can lean the pr, I don't know what we can do with that. But what I'm saying is, there has to be something that says, "You're going to pay us and, and these are the bad things that will happen if you don't." Just like if, if you borrowed it from a bank or any lending institution, they're going to have certain things that you're going to sign that says, "We're going to come and, and we're going to do bad things to you if you don't pay us." And so I just want to make sure that the, that the ratepayers' money is protected, uh, because that's, that's the main thing here. And if we have, I don't want the ratepayers to start thinking, "Well, wait a minute. Why am I paying so much for my sewer bill?" If you've got all this money to, to lend, it, uh, you must be overcharging me if you've got all this stockpile of money sitting here. So I just want to make sure that, that it all comes about and, and it's all open and very transparent. But to me, it has to fall within certain, certain guidelines to make this happen.
Sure. So for us, staff, the answer for staff is that the answer's no. You pay the amount, or we bring it to council and they give us direction on how you'd like to handle it. I talked to Scott earlier today about the amount of money that, or the, the percentage that we could charge. Uh, I think, uh, Scott, the number was we could charge up to eighteen percent?
That's correct. The state law sets a cap on interest at eighteen percent per year. So it's one and a half percent per month.
So basically, I would say that if we do a ten percent handling fee, and then if we were to borrow the money, which we did borrow some sewer fund money for the street sweeper at two point seven eight percent, uh, does the council want to go somewhere like that?
I, I appreciate the, the, your, your concept seems fine. You know, with the remaining amount to do a ten percent. And if, from there, recommend, maybe set something up with Ruth for next year so that they're not running into this problem again. Um, but, you know, ten percent handling fee on the remaining funds seems appropriate. You're not going to have other people saying, "I want to pay another ten percent." So.
Vice Mayor Goodson is in the queue.
Sorry. My apologies.
Red flag, I, I concur. And let me pig, piggyback off of what, um, Councilman Hatley has just said. I can't tell anyone else how to budget their affairs, but when it comes to a request, um, for the city regarding a payment modification, then I would like to give some input. And so I suggest that, as opposed to the service being paid annually, to pay it, uh, quarterly. And this would minimize the potential of this problem reoccurring annually. And it's just not good business when my bill comes every month, I pay it. Um, I, I have never had a bill where it says pay once a year. Uh, Council, uh, Woman Draper?
Well, I agree with, uh, Vice Mayor Goods, Goodson. They need to be accountable. Um, but I also agree with, uh, Councilmember Hatley, that there should be some kind of penalty so that this doesn't keep happening. And of course, we all know as ratepayers, we don't get to pay our bills once a year either. But I think the ten percent handling fee would, I think, discourage people from wanting to do, to not pay on time. And, uh, so I'm, I would say that would be reasonable. I wouldn't want to charge a high percentage interest rate on top of that because it is a nonprofit and they do help a lot of people. So I'm not, I'm not saying that it's okay not to pay their bills. I'm just saying the ten percent handling fee, I think, would discourage them from doing it.
So two things I would like to suggest, two things coming out here. One is that we need to set up a policy basically on the ten percent. So we will bring back a policy that says something to that effect. If we're doing something like that, you're going to pay a ten percent handling fee. And then we will communicate with this nonprofit on whether they want to pay their bill in full, which will not incur a ten percent. But if they want to do this, it will incur a ten percent. And if they need to do, make some other arrangements with us next year, that we will make those and bring those back to the council so that you guys know what we're doing.
Um, Council, Councilman Hatley?
Thank you. Okay. Is that going to, again, uh, satisfy the, um, interest that if we loan money out, we're calling it, we're not calling it interest. That's what we have to call it when we borrow from it. And anybody else that, that we would loan it to would have to pay interest on it. Uh, I understand the handling fee, the ten percent. I have no problem with that. But again, I still think there should be some kind of, of, whether we charge twelve percent, charge them two percent or whatever, but some kind of a percentage for that, uh, interest on that. Because if anybody else in this audience walked in and wanted to borrow money, they're going to pay us interest. I mean, that's if we were to loan like that.
Yeah. So let me, let me throw out just a couple of ideas that have occurred to me. Um, because anytime, public agencies, when they charge fees, the fee must reasonably approximate the cost of the service. So if we have a ten percent handling fee, I want to know what's the cost of providing the service? And does the fee reasonably approximate that, that, um, that service? Now, this inter, in this instance, the service would be, we're going to have some additional paperwork. We're going to have some additional staff time. Um, but really, the service is loaning of the money. So I, we need to make sure that we call it the right thing, whether it's, whether we call it a ten percent handling fee, or whether we call it an in, ten percent interest on unpaid balances. That's my preference, by the way. Uh, but I've got to look at it to make sure that whichever way we go, it's going to withstand legal scrutiny.